Call to order, the Stewart County Board of Education, regular session meeting, November 14th at 7:00, at 7:00 p.m. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. This time, federal span for a moment silent. Please. Now for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we will have roll call.
Mr. Shelton?
Presser.
Mr. Dacus?
Here.
Ms. Fitchey?
Here.
Mr. Pusso?
Here.
Ms. Sanders?
Here.
Mr. Gillum?
Here.
Mr. Lamb?
Here.
At this time, we will go to our open public comment. At this time, we had three people sign up for open comment. When you come up to speak, you'll get to the center of the room there, address the chair, and you will have five minutes to speak. Before you get started on your speaking, state your name and your address, please. First, we have Ms. Tina Ramsey.
Hi, good evening. So nice to see y'all. I'm usually behind the camera. Don't usually come up here and speak, prefer to write. But I wanted to talk to you about two things that are on your agenda tonight. The first one is the TESA. And I want to say congratulations to the third grade teachers in last year's third grade class. Y'all brought it. Your goal was only to increase proficiency from 31.1 to 36.9, but you increased it to 51.5%. So you more than tripled your goal, which was just fantastic for 2023. The state has mandated that you have to be 70% proficient in third grade ELA by the year 2030. Would have been great, but when I looked at this year's TESA packet, you reduced your goal that you're going to increase percentage in proficiency of third graders. So that you're still going to make the goal of 70% by 2030. But if you had left it at 5% per year increase, you probably could have 70% proficiency in third graders by the year 2027 or 2028. I don't know why, when you more than tripled past your goal, that you would reduce your goals. Usually, when you goal set, you want to meet the goals. And if you exceed them, then you increase your goals. That's how you get an outstanding school, okay? The second thing I want to talk about is this LEA compliance report. I have three of these, and each year, they're signed that the school is in compliance with everything. However, you defeat the purpose of this. You're not 100% in compliance when there's any complaints founded at the state level. And we all know that there's complaints founded at the state level. Maybe the school board members know, maybe they don't. I have one right here. The training's not done, and so you're not in compliance at this point. The training's not going to be done until March. So signing that you're 100% in compliance, that gives a false picture to a lot of people. I believe the TDOE uses this for two things. One, to keep you accountable. And two, they want to see where the weaknesses are in school. Nobody's perfect. You've said it many times, Mr. Craig. Nobody's perfect. School's not perfect. You learn from the substantiated complaints. And there are substantiated complaints. If anybody wants to see them, I have the paperwork right here, along with last year's TESA report and this year's TESA report. But again, congratulations to exceeding your goal. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Ramsey. At this time, next will be Ms. Rita Peterson.
Hello, my name is Rita Peters, and I live in Indian Mount. Tonight, I'd like to talk about the Drama and Theater program. I'd like to talk about our theater and the incredible value that theater arts bring to our students and highlight the crucial need for a new or a multi-use facility that will better support opportunities, not only for our theater students, but for choir, band, cheer, and more. The theater is a valued center for our community creativity, learning, and self-expression. But we've struggled with inadequate facilities for far too long. The building is one of our oldest school structures and desperately needs attention, and temporary fixes are no longer enough. The students have faced leaking roofs, outdated lighting, a poor sound system, and limited backstage space, all of which restrict productions and diminish the experience for both performers and the audience. Theater is a powerful educational tool that helps our students develop a wide range of skills that are essential to success, both in school and in life. For instance, a 2023 study from the National Center for Education Statistics reports that students involved in extracurricular activities such as theater are 25% less likely to be absent as compared to students who do not engage in extracurriculars. Another 2023 study by the National Endowment for the Arts shows that theater arts students score 13% higher in reading and 12% higher in mathematics as compared to their peers who are not engaged in the arts. Furthermore, involvement in theater and other performing arts has a direct impact on ACT scores. A 2023 study by the Arts Education Partnership found that students participating in these programs scored, on average, 15% higher on ACT English section as compared to their peers. These statistics are very clear. Theater arts drive personal and academic success, building students' communication, confidence, creativity, empathy, discipline, and resilience. But to unlock all these benefits, we must create the right environment. A new facility can ensure that every student has the opportunity to succeed academically, socially, and emotionally. While we have passionate students, dedicated teachers, and interested parents, the reality is that our current spaces do not provide the environment needed for the theater arts program to thrive. Moreover, a new facility would allow a wider variety of events, such as concerts, performances, workshops, competitions, and even community outreach projects, making the arts an integral part of our school's identity. In sum, theater arts help students succeed, not only by providing creative outlets and fostering emotional intelligence, but also by directly contributing to the improved academic performance, increased school engagement, and better attendance. I ask you that if you, if and when you're considering school facilities, please consider building a theater. Our drama program sells out every show every year, and we need a new space to broaden the range of opportunities available to our students. We, as parents and as educators, must ensure that we are providing a safe and inspiring space for all who use it where our students and community can fully engage in the transformative power of live theater. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Next, we have Ms. Audrey Jensen.
Hello, my name's Audrey Johnson. I live in Dixie Rock. So I'm going to touch again on the compliance report. And I talked to Gary prior to this, and he clarified some. But not from what I read from the compliance report is that we have to follow that when we sign this and we approve it, we are saying we are compliant with all state, federal, and school board, local education, school board laws and policies. Currently, and this is very concerning, I feel personally, because there has been so many issues regarding special education, Stewart County Schools in the past few years, is that you guys have not been informed, from the school board members I have talked to, that your director of schools has not told you that there's been additional three substantiated complaints. How are we making decisions, informed decisions about our budget, about compliance reports, if y'all aren't getting information? Like, that is very concerning to me, especially since this is not a one-off. This is now a trend. So how can you sign something and say we're compliant if you're not getting the information? So with the compliance report that was included in Gary's packet, so we could potentially be compliant if we say, yes, we are currently, these are the violations that we were founded, but this is our corrective action plan. And this is what we're going to do. The state has required that training has been complete. I contacted the SED coordinator today to see if that training has been complete. It has not. So at this moment, we can't say we're compliant, I mean, or we need to put it in that plan. Okay, and aside from that, in a separate case, because I was the advocate for that, those comments about this, in a separate case I'm working on, I can tell you with multiple cases, faith for appropriate public education is still not being provided. When we go to an IEP meeting and the SED coordinator recommends homeschool 10-plus times in an IEP meeting, that's an admission of not being able to provide a free, appropriate public education. Where are they saying, we can't do it, or we won't do it? Why on earth would we recommend a child to be homeschooled? Is that, I mean, why? Why? You guys can't provide the services and support this child needs? And these are recorded. These aren't, this isn't hearsay. These are facts. And if you want real answers, come talk to me, and I can get you those. Okay, so again, separate student, separate student. So when a student's enrolled, special ed student with high, high needs, extreme disabilities, enrolled in the school for four years, and we request grades and transcripts, and again, this is email chain, this is factual, we have zero grades for the student for four years. Minimal services have been provided. And no data, no progress monitoring, the IEP's not updated for four years. When I go around the IP table and say, have you met this student? Have you met this student? Have you met this student? And some say yes, some say no, but accumulatively, in that four years, less than 30 minutes has all those staff combined interacted with that student. But yet, we're making educational decisions for that student? Four years. That was your child? How do you compensate for four years? How do you do that? How do you rectify four years? Okay, and then the OCR Office of Civil Rights identifies that discrimination takes many forms. Best intention is non-exemption. Complacency is non-exemption. We're at a point where we have these discussions. You are informed. These aren't my opinions. I can come back. We can have the conversation. I can privately show you what I have with maintaining confidentiality. Or you can talk to the director of schools, who should be aware of these things and making sure that we are getting compliant and we are providing faith. I don't know where you're going to get the right answers, because it seems like you're not getting any answers right now. But we're at a point where you guys are now aware of this. And if you choose to do nothing, you are now responsible for that. You are responsible for this to continue. So if we want to say that we are compliant in state and federal laws, y'all know that we're not now, do what you wish. I mean, all I can do is inform you.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen. Next item five on the agenda, we have corrections, additions, and the approval of the agenda. Do we have any corrections or additions that need to be made? If not, I'll seek a motion to approve the agenda? Motion. Second? Second. Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Ms. Gillum. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Agenda approved. Next item is the approval of the minutes from September 12th. We have a motion to approve the minutes from last meeting. Motion from Ms. Sanders. We have a second?
I have a second.
Second, Ms. Fitchey. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye. Any opposed, say no. All right, now, the next item is approval of the consent agenda. Let Mike tell you a little bit about what's on there, but it's typical fundraisers and a field trip.
We had two from the band boosters. I think they were just getting organized real well. So they asked Mr. Gray if they could have these two fundraisers. He approved them, I approved them. And then the student council, they're going to be selling turkey and Christmas grams during lunch. And then the field trip, the cross-country teams going to Huntsville, Alabama, for overnight trip, out-of-state overnight trip on, as you can see, December 6th and 7th.
Do we have a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Ms. Fitchey. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Second. Now, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Next, we have like a multi-layered thing here. But first thing we want to do is we want to have the recognition of the Stewart County High School girls and boys golf team at this time. And I will turn this over to Mike at this time for this.
We can have all our golf team members come up, please. Come on, don't be shy, guys. As most all of you know, they're a lot better looking than me. Hope y'all can hear. We made quite a bit of history this year. And we've had a great, great golf program for a number of years. It's a program that's dear to my heart. As my son was a golfer and was lucky enough to play in the state tournament as an individual. So on a personal level, this is a very special moment. This has been a very special moment for me. I play golf with some of these guys every now and then. They beat my brains out, but that's okay. They should. But just to give you an idea of some of the, and I'm not going to go through all these statistics, but our boys team this year finished with a record of 74 wins and five losses. Our girls team had 52 wins and five losses. That's as a team. Our, first of all, our girls were state runner-up this year in the state golf tournament. This is the second time in history that that has happened in Stewart County. It was way back when, I think Coach Nick was in high school. We had a couple of young ladies who were runner-up in the state and probably should have won the state for that year. We also, as an individual, had Shelby Smith, state champion. And that is the first time in school history we've had that. As you all know, last year, our boys team were state runner-up. This year, they were able to get over the hump, and they won the state championship. This was the fifth straight appearance as a team that our golf team made it to the state tournament. And as an individual, Aiden Smith was state runner-up as an individual. And I think that's a great accomplishment. That's. If I'm correct now, I probably should check. That's the second year in a row we had a state runner-up, correct? Because Hayden made it last, did it last year. But just.
I have four.
Okay, you got four. All right, good deal. But this is, you know, couldn't be more proud of them. I know our community. There was a contingent at the state tournament. I was lucky enough to get there, see most of it. And, I mean, you could hear Stewart County all over that mountainside up there. And it was a great, great thing, and we're really proud of y'all. Y'all go down in history. Something, like I told these guys at the end of the tournament, talked to a few of them, I said, it's something that nobody can ever take away from you. And it's a memory you're always going to have, and you're always going to be state champs. So here they are.
What a wonderful job for the golf team there. At this time, we'll go into the discussion of the program with guest speakers. And I believe Mr. Nick Wallace will be speaking to us first.
At least I got my back to them. So first of all, I'd like to thank you for your time and your attention. I don't want to take up too much of it. You've got to put enough on your agenda. But I owe these people back here, and some people who aren't even here tonight. I owe them this for thousands and thousands of hours of work. And, you know, I just want to touch a little bit before I start that on what Mike didn't finish there, because I probably shouldn't have gave him some better numbers on that. But he's right, we've been in tournaments. The boys have won five straight district tournaments, five straight region tournaments, been in state tournament five years in a row. In that time, they're 291 and 47, which is an 86% winning percentage. The girls, 169 and 57, three, four district titles, three region titles. And we've sent seven boys as individuals, five girls as individuals. We've had five all-state, four all-state players in the past few years. And I think those numbers are about to go up with a couple of our kids here pretty soon. But in the past few years, if you count up all the money, it's about $500,000 in golf scholarships we've put out in about six years. About half a million dollars. So other than that, though, the most important thing to me, some of them are back here as teachers. Some of them are nurses. One of them's a pilot. We've got one fixing to be a doctor. We've got engineers. We've got, I've got kids, we've got kids all over that are doing amazing things. And, you know, that's one thing we need to understand about golf. Golf's a lifetime sport. It's not a, when you're done as a 20-year-old, you get to put it down forever. A lot of these people are going to be doing their business on a golf course. And it's a difference. It's a different thing. But as many of you know, I'm here to ask for funds to build an onsite golf facility at the high school. Currently, each of my players have to drive or be driven to Parrish Landon Golf Course to practice for daily skills, habits, things like that. We don't have anywhere in the entire county to practice golf. We have to drive out of county to do it. Parrish Landon has been being key set down several years ago. And he's been more than gracious to us. And he charges us $2,500 a year as a school, as a high school. And that, those fees, my parents pay for. My parents pay that every year. We just split it amongst the players and pay it. And over the past six years, that's $15,000. And that's just kind of touching the surface. What they get from that is a bag of rain balls a day and green peas. But, you know, there's, that's just a small portion of what it costs to play golf, trust me. So that arrangement's been great. Like I said, Parrish Landon's been great to us. I can't overstate this. There's two things that's made this program successful. The first thing is the parents, and the second thing is Parrish Landon. That's what Stewart County Schools owes the banks to. It's those two groups of people. They're the ones that's made this what it is. But like I said, that's just kind of scratching the surface on what they've done. Parents, grandparents, brothers, sisters, transport those kids down there. When they get old enough, obviously, they can drive themselves. But we all know, even when they're driving themselves, who's paying for that? If they coming out of their pocket, it's still coming out of their parents' pocket. So round trip for some of my golfers is over 50 miles. If you live in any mountains, it can be over 50 miles. If you live on the east side of the county, it's easy 50 miles. That's just one day. That's one day. And I'd be afraid to know how much money's been spent over the past 10, 11 years since I've been doing this on my parents driving back and forth, my kids driving back and forth. I don't know how much money that is. I'd really be afraid to know. I probably don't, I would be embarrassed. That's why I say overall, what I'm standing up here for is what my parents have done for the past 10 years. So, and there's another really big factor to this. You know, 15 years ago, we started the middle school program. And my middle school program can't go, my middle school program don't get those benefits of Parrish Landon. We don't get no benefits there. So when I take them down there, we cannot go down there without paying money. We have to, because we have to buy the rain balls. So I have to pay for practice at Parrish Landon. And, you know, I'm constantly trying to get kids in this game, but it's harder when I've got to get kids and I've got to take them down there. You know, it's harder to do. I really believe in golf. I believe in what it can do. And I said, the proof's in the pudding on what it can do and what it can make a person once they're older. So. So I haven't said that. I've had a ton of parents, a ton of community members, and a ton of people that are just huge financial supporters of this program, okay? And they've been financial supporters since I've been here. They've loved this program, and they've gotten together, and they want to help build this facility, okay? Based on our estimates right now, we've probably got over $100,000 of volunteer work and materials and cost. These people, like TTO Incorporated, they're going to do the survey and engineer, the drawing the plans, all these things are going to be donated. I could go down the list of contractors who are donating it all. So, and we're not even trying to build anything that that's amazing. We're trying to build a 30-vol, 45-little building that's basically a pole barn. Because I don't need anything but just somewhere to set up a couple of simulators and my kids be able to practice and hit balls and putt and chip a little bit, you know, and have a decent practice without having to drive, put so much money in. And like I said, obviously, it'll benefit me. I'm not going to lie, it's not, it's going to benefit me because I can be with my kids more. You know, I'm also doing that driving every day for my middle school and my high school team. And it will benefit me, it'll benefit our coaches, and benefit all the people that. But I also think it'll help me get more kids involved. Because not all parents can do what some of these parents are able to do. They can't make those trips. So I do think it will increase the activity in the program. We can draw more people. And, I mean, if anybody else, if you want to hear from anybody else, as far as anybody else that's here, but like I said, I'm just their voice tonight. And I'm doing everything I possibly can to help them in every way we can get this facility built. So thank you.
Is there anyone else going to speak? I believe Mr. Adam Smith.
My name's Adam Smith. I'm in District 1 with Mr. Darryl. I could echo everything that he's already said, and it's 100% true. One of the things that I think we ought to focus on, too, is, and I get it, because Ms. Peterson's right, I agree. We do need to spend money on drama and cheer and everything else. And I've got nothing against that. And they put together a great plan, I'll be there. Let me know what day you're going to have that meeting, and let me know what day to be here. My daughter's in drama. I'll support all of that. And that's what we've just done over the last month or so, is we gathered up all of these people that are willing to donate their time. They're willing to donate their labor. And some are willing to donate the literal materials and things of that nature. When I look at it, I realize, you know, $100,000, that sounds like a ton of money or whatever, you know, you're going to end up putting a motion out for possibly. We're talking about a turnkey facility that's probably going to be worth $300,000. That's $200,000 of equity like that. It's almost as if what we're really asking is, can we give you guys a gift? I mean, that's basically what it boils down to. And if you're wondering if this is necessary and all that kind of stuff, it's, she's going to hate me for saying this, but her freshman year, Shelby shot a 102 at the region tournament. And it just broke her heart, because she knew she had let her team down. She had done everything she could, but she just wasn't ready for that stage. So then, my wife was ready to kill me, because then we decided to invest in a lot of things for her. We did invest into, I turned about a quarter acre of my property into basically a short-beam facility. We had six or seven tea stations. I put a chip and green in. I bought a greens mower. My point is, I did all these things as an investment into the kid. That's what I'm, and honestly, that's all we're asking y'all to do at this point. Invest in the team that has a level of potential that I've never seen. And the record shows it with this athletic program. There's been some great athletic programs. There's no doubt about that. But there's nothing in comparison to what this team has done over the last 10 years. Nothing. And when you look around, like I said, there is, there is no facility. He's got that 100% right, Nick's 100% right. You know, football has got its football field. That is where they can practice. That is where they can play. Baseball, softball, the basketball, volleyball, even cheer has gotten in, I mean, it's a gymnasium. I saw not too long ago, you know, they had one where they had, I guess, remotely had a competition or whatever. And I know, and I want to leave the band out. I mean, the band's got a place to practice, too, I think. Even cross-country can walk out the door and, and run around the campus. Golf can't do any of that. There is nothing for golf. They have to go to Parrish Landon. And like he's talking about, if you're, if you're deep in the mound, that's a 50-minute drive, one way. Um, it's bad on us, I mean, I'm on that 79, it's still 35, 40 minutes for us. I don't want to talk too long, but is this needed? Yes. Is this a steal of a deal? Yes. Is this going to be used to its absolute maximum benefit? Yes. And if you saw, and I know, I know Coach, uh, Ms. Craig did, when Shelby was on that playoff hole in Sevierville, I bet there was 150 people there lining that fairway, and 100 of them was from Stewart County. Hey, we're talking five, five-and-a-half hour drive, that's how much this program means to those people. Thank y'all.
Do we have anyone else? I believe that's the two that I had that was spoken. Okay. At this time, uh, since we've done the recognition of the discussion, we will, we will talk about the approval of a golf facility locker room, and I'll start by making a motion that we as a board make a motion to give up to $100,000 for a golf facility on this property. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Have a second, Mr. Lamb. Now, do we have discussion? Any discussion?
Exactly. Go ahead.
No, no, no. No, I'm sorry.
Now, exactly where, where it is actually going to be facilitated.
So just, just like, uh, the bathroom deal that's, that's still working on, Michael addressed in the director's report, it appears that where the most feasible place for this to be will be near that, down there by the baseball and softball area, in that, in that area there. Um, but as far as set in stone, we don't have that just yet. This right here, uh, this motion is just for them to start with the allocation of the funds to begin that process. We don't have any of the hard details of anything like that. We will have, uh, if approved by this board, there will be updated meetings, uh, in the, in the reports about what's going on. Um, like, like, like anything, there'll have to be a survey done, there'll have to be the state involved to say what they can do, when they can do it, who can do it, who can't do it. Um, all that process still has to take place. Mr. Perso.
Yeah, I mean, uh, not long ago, when we did the softball thing, we talked about, uh, you know, sponsors getting in, helping out, that's a great thing. Um, I would like to know, you said 100,000, we're earmarking 100,000, up to 100,000. Um, I guess the biggest thing is, uh, well now I feel like a dummy, because I forgot what I was going to say. Either way, we're earmarking 100,000 after it gets voted through, no more than that. After everything's built from donations, is that when we've been put into it, or do we?
Yeah.
Does anybody have a plan on that?
There, there's no plan, I, what I'm asking for is us to give 100,000. And if they use the full 100, they use the full 100. If they don't, they don't.
2024 or 2025 school year? This year or this year?
Uh, out of, out of this budget here.
Okay.
Um, we do have a, a hefty budget, we have a healthy budget, uh, with over $6 million in it, um, it's not going to affect our budget at all. We have the money to do this.
But then they're going to have the volunteers that's going to finish out what the cost is.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes. Uh, from, from what I've gathered, there's, there's people that have donated and spoke up and said, "Hey, I'm taking care of all the HVAC." Um, people saying, "I'm taking care of all the concrete, pouring it, donating the concrete, um, electrical wor," I mean, just, it's unreal. The, the, the things I was told is absolutely unreal. Um, but one thing that these, these folks have very made clear to me is that this is strictly golf only. Uh, these are, these are businesses that have invested into the golf program, and they want to see this developed.
So does that run us into any, uh, legal things?
Well...
Got to ask.
What do you, what do you mean by what legal things?
If, if it's only accessible to the golf program, does, and it's a school building, does that hurt us in any way?
No, it'll, it'll be like the football weight room. You're only going in there if your own football team lifts and weights, and it's something similar to that.
Yeah. That's all I'm asking.
We still have to follow law.
Yeah.
To, to the design, to the bill, to all that, but as far as legality of golf only, no.
Okay. I think it shows how, how important this golf team is for the businesses in this community to come together the way they have, and, and to offer the help to, to get this done. I mean, I think that, that just the information that I've heard over the last really day is incredible. I mean, it really is. And I mean, I believe that everybody should have a right, uh, you know, to have something that nice, especially a team that has done as well as our golf team has, so.
Well, I, I tell you, Mike, Mike said it, and Adam said it there, I, I went, I was privileged enough to go, and I really thought I was going to get up there and see the players and their parents, and their parents only. But man, Grandma and Grandpas were there, aunts and uncles there. I think our whole maintenance department was off for a holiday, and they were all up there that one day.
Were they really on holiday?
They claimed a holiday. But it was, it was insane to see the amount of Stewart County folks all the way up there to watch this, this thing.
You're at, I've never been near one of those facilities, but is 12 hundred square feet bigger enough for, because I've seen a lot of kids right here.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Golf simulators, I know that, and I might be wrong, it's, it's going to be similar to what's down here, correct?
Yeah, you don't really need that big of a space.
Right.
I mean, you're basically hitting into a net.
Net, right.
It's, it's, it's a simulator.
These golf simulators, the new ones are incredible, I mean, they're very, uh, you know, Brian Threed has one right over here now, and, and it is, I'm not saying it's 100% accurate, but as far as, I mean, because they, you can actually play a whole golf course on this thing, but as far as hitting, I mean, you don't, you have to have a very small space. So it, it, yeah, to have the space that he's talking about, I think there's going to be...
This facility size is what they've come to us with, so I think it is, because they put it together, the, this golf group.
Because I'm assuming some of these people that has went to other schools, larger facilities, larger schools either, have looked at them, maybe some colleges and universities, but they, I mean, I'm sure they know what size, they know what it means, but I just didn't know how big it was.
I actually looked at one like last weekend. Yeah, this is, this is exactly what we need. And so those at, looking around the college in this...
How many, how many other high schools do we know that have a facility like this?
I know Smyrna got one.
Smyrna. So not, not many though, right?
It's not many.
That's good. I mean, that, that's something that we, we can say at Stewart County, we actually have.
Absolutely.
I mean, over, over the high schools.
Um, I'm, I'm the, I'm the, Mike knows, I'm the, I'm the representative of Tennessee, Tennessee Coaches Association, I'm, I'm the golf representative for the state, so we have these conversations about three times a year with all the golf coaches, and, um, I mean, probably, I mean, once you remove the private schools, you know, once you remove the private schools and you get into public schools, you're, you're talking maybe 20, 25 of the, you know, that, that have it. Now, a lot of people have facilities within their city that they can use, because golf simulators are popular in cities. But, um, but as far as on the campus, it's not very many.
You know, I thought what Nick said is right there earlier, we're looking at at best in 100 grand, and this golf program has already renovated $500,000 in scholarships. That's, that's insane. So it's...
I, I think one other thing too, though, a lot of people probably don't think about that, again, we're not trying to, to dwarf any, any other program or anything, but again, with our community, I mean, I know personally, I can think of just some of the schools you guys probably play against have probably either a driving range in their city, or they have a golf course, smaller, like Waverly, for instance. I know Waverly has, they have, you know, the, the country club, and they have McEwen, and they have, you know, places like that. So I mean, for us not to have nothing, I, again, it, it shows that, that what you guys have accomplished is incredible, so.
Any other discussion?
I have a question.
Mr. Lamb.
I'm all in support of helping the children, face every program you can, make some better children, uh, more productive adults. This, I was going to play devil's advocate here, do you 100% got all these funds lined up, like you said, you've got the concrete covered, you've got the, that's covered, and it seems like, just from my perspective sitting here, that it's on a handshake deal? What if one of them don't fall through?
Great question. And the answer to that is, this $100,000.
Okay.
They're either going to get a $100,000 facility, or the $300,000 facility they talked about.
Sure.
By us saying 100,000, that's, that's completeness, that's enough to complete this facility.
Okay.
But if they have all these donations and all this and that, then it could be above what they actually can get. 100,000, and I chose 100,000 because that's what we designated for the bathrooms, and Bobby went a little up to cover extra cost, and it's, it's similar, it's a, it's a similar type, type deal. Um, I think, actually, I don't even think they want plumbing in it, so it'd actually be a little bit cheaper, but, um, but yes, that 100,000 will complete a facility.
I just didn't want to be, like, start with something.
Oh, absolutely.
And then just get dropped.
Have a half a building down there. Yes, ma'am, absolutely. Absolutely. Jamie Tippett won't let that happen, I promise. Any other discussion? Ms. Stacy, if you will, take a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Perso.
Yes.
Ms. Sanders.
Yes.
Mr. Gillum.
Yes.
Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Mr. Shelton.
Yes.
Mr. Dacus.
Yes.
Ms. Fitch.
Yes.
All right, well, that approves, uh, we'll go on to the next one. Um, before we do golf, we appreciate you guys, I know y'all want to get out of here now, so thank you for your time. And...
We'll just talk a little louder so we can, you know, we definitely have, uh, on the...
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Peters reached out to me just two weeks to be put on the agenda, and, uh, some things were already taken place, and Mr. Craig will address that in a second.
That was exactly what I was going to say, Lamb.
Yeah, a, a picture was sent to me, I didn't know how bad it was down there, and I saw all that water in there.
When, when you talked about, and I know this is while they're leaving, but when you talked about us having a healthy balance, then we need to think about drama as well.
Absolutely.
We definitely need to, we need to move forward with that, because they have, they struggled in there long enough. I mean, they, they have a facility, but it's not a facility that, that we need to expand it, so.
In January, uh, in our next meeting, Ms. Peters is going to come back to be on the agenda with some things she'd like to see, kind of like what the golf is doing. She's been, she's been communicating, or going to communicate with them about what kind of, yeah.
She definitely, speaking of a healthy balance, and then they're, they're in such need, we sure don't want to overlook that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay?
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely agree with you.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is the approval of the 143 budget amendments. Uh, do we have a, a motion to approve?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Perso, now for discussion.
Ms. Wallace has, uh, these are for the cafeteria.
Last year, we had received a, a grant, we had to do the install and then show them that we spent that money, and so that 80,000 that's going in, um, into equipment, it's just really a reimbursement, is what that is. So we had received that last year, it's not hitting until this year into this year's budget. And, um, every year, I have to do a plan if we have excess balance, so I did a plan to replace some equipment, and you'll, and this will lead into the next, uh, the next item on the agenda, but we're going to be taking some equipment out, we're going to be replacing some equipment. And, um, a combi oven is $30,000. If it's gas, if, if, if we had gas, it would be about $50,000 for a combi oven. So this equipment's very expensive, but it was one of the things that are, one of the several things that I had talked about, uh, in my plan with the state. So that's the 200,000, so it's coming out of the fund balance, and we are putting it into the equipment line.
Um, go ahead and, uh, take a vote to approve that. Uh, all in favor, signify by saying a aye. Any opposed, say no. Next, we'll do the approval of surplus items. Uh, do we have, sorry, we have a motion to approve? Motion, we have a second. Second, Mr. Shelton, now discussion.
You have a list, and you had a list, you had a packet of, uh, all the, uh, items out of the cafeteria, this all coming out of cafeteria. Uh, you know, I, I recommend that we get rid of it. Uh, most of, looking at it, most of it's inoperable, and we'll probably end up having to scrap it, because, but there's a few things on there, if anybody wants a min mixer.
60 quart?
A standing large mixer.
Oh, wow.
I mean, I, I'm, I'm not making light of, I guess I'm making light of.
No, that's okay.
Like the old trucks that go everywhere.
Well, and some of them are from like 1994, 19...
And, but just worn their, their life out, so we...
As good as our maintenance department is, as good as they are, some, some things that have...
We need a three-phase, four-eighty mixer, we have.
Three.
Happening to be people have three things. So on the surplus, do we just allow some things, just never sell? And has, once it's, once it doesn't sell, then we can...
Get rid of it.
Get rid of it. But we have to at least put it out there on gov deals and, and some, like, you know, some of this stuff people may want for the scrap metal, you know?
The, the inoperable stuff, I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't think we have to put that in there, do we?
I mean, we're going to surplus it if we don't get anything, for we're going to go to the dump.
Okay.
We'll be hauling it off.
And 60 quart.
Yeah, as long as we record it's put in surplus, no matter what happens to it after that.
Right. As long as you don't take it home.
No.
So, I, I just want to make sure I understand that, because, uh, when I talked with Eric, he said if it was inoperable, I just want...
Well, Eric told you that, then that's, then maybe I'm mistaken.
Okay, I just want...
The inoperable stuff, I think you are correct.
Okay.
We trash that, but if it's, if it's something surplus, if really, you're only going to be selling the mixer.
Three, yeah. I just wanted to show everybody that we were getting rid of some things, and...
My mistake.
That's okay, I just want, wanted to clarify that before I start taking a bunch of pictures to put on there.
All right. Um, any discussion? We have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor of approving the surplus items, signify by saying a aye. Any opposed, say no. Next, we'll have the approval of the 25, 26 school calendar received, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, we have a second. Second, by Mr. Gillum. Any discussion on the school calendar?
These are still made up by committees?
Yes, ma'am.
Of everything?
This, uh, basically, all right, uh, basically, this mirrors this year's calendar, which mirrored the year before's calendar. Uh, yes, we took input from principals, teachers, I think the principals also had parent input. Uh, it's basically the same calendar we've always done. One change, you will see, you see a, we have a blue block, a blue block box on the calendar this year, that is going to be the day after fall break, and, and I, I had somebody ask me, why are we doing that? We're trying to always improve, and that is the first quarter, so that day will be spent with our teachers, uh, meeting, and, uh, in their grade levels, looking at our benchmark data, and looking at what we need to improve upon and what we're doing well. It's basically the same calendar we've always done, one change, you will see, you see a, we have a blue block, a blue block box on the calendar this year, that is gonna be the day after fall break, and and I I had somebody ask me why we doing that. We're trying to always improve, and that is the first quarter, so that day will be spent with our teachers, uh, meeting, and uh, in their grade levels, looking at our benchmark data, and looking at what we need to improve upon and what we're doing well. So, that day will take the place of one of our in-service days before school starts, so teachers won't have like five days before school, they'll have four, and then we'll use a day there. And that also gives everybody a little, when you're coming in off a break. Uh, the other change that I, that I can show you that's a little different, on uh, January fifth, that is a stockpile day. That day will be used for second semester planning for teachers. So, the students will get an extra day off after Christmas, teachers will have to come to work and work on what they're gonna do for the remainder of the school year. All these things were done with the best interest of academics, and so uh, we feel like the strong calendar, we've always pretty much followed this type of calendar.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of approval of the school calendar, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say no? Brings us to the next one, the approval of the LEA compliance report, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, we have a second? Second? Second by Mr. Gillum, alright, and discussion time. Any discussion on the uh, compliance report?
I'm not gonna ask it just 'cause, uh, so, we heard some statements earlier in the public comment that directly deals with this. While I don't necessarily believe that we're not in compliance, uh, because the class doesn't have to be taken until two February of next year, twenty twenty-five, so we're still in compliance on that. But my question was, does do we have state substantiated findings, and the reason I want to know that is in the LEA, is this a cover page that we send with the report? So, we send a report to the state, says, hey, we're in compliance, this is what we're doing, if we do have a substantiated um, thing?
Every spring, every spring.
Yep.
School systems are all audited.
Yes, sir.
For being in compliance.
Yep.
And as long as we are working towards compliance, we, I feel very comfortable signing off on this.
I I don't necessarily feel uncomfortable, what I'm asking though is if when, is this a report that goes to somebody else more than this page that we have?
No.
So, it's just this page?
This is all, this is the page, and what we have to do, if there is a complaint, and and we answer the complaint, which we have had to do a few times. Because a complaint is made, doesn't mean it's true. I am gonna say that. We also need to understand that when there's a complaint made, the goal of the state for us is to get it right. And and again, I'll stand by what I say, as far as, we we will make mistakes. We will make mistakes, but we are going to do our level best when we do, and the state tells us what, there was a complaint, just an example, and I'm not gonna get into specifics because it's privacy. There were, I think, five points that were made, there were two, there were, there was one, I believe, finding, and I can go back, I'll have to go back, I wasn't prepared for this.
No, it's okay.
Because in my six years as director, this has never been an issue, and the state has never come back and withheld funds. And a lot of that's what this is about, if you don't, if you're not compliant, and they find you're not in compliance, they withhold your funds. It's never come to that, and it and it won't come to that, because we, if we are making a mistake, we will fix it before that time comes. So, I feel very comfortable with signing off on it. And I I'm not trying to be over dramatic about it, but it it it's it's to the point where uh, sometimes I feel like uh, that there's a perception out there by some, that we are out to hurt kids, and that is not what we're here for. And I'm definitely not here for that, because especially ed children, the children that are in those programs are are very important to me as on personal level too, so, and some people know what I'm talking about. So, we're just going to, I feel like, and I recommend that you approve the compliance report.
So, Kyle, one thing that I I'd ask with him, and I checked up with the state. With the compliance, but I just want to get this out here too, the compliance report doesn't mean we haven't had findings against us. It it means that there had, there could have been, but we've corrected or have an action of correction, if not, the state says, we ain't giving you no d- no money.
Yeah.
And that's not happening.
Exactly.
It doesn't mean we're perfect.
Whatever we report.
Yeah.
Is, you know, I'm not saying we do or don't have them.
Yeah.
That was a lot of that.
I I believe that we've had this discussion about the compliance report the last couple of years, and the same things are being said.
Well, I'm new.
Not you. I'm saying, I'm saying as far as general public knowledge, this is something that has not, has been discussed before, nothing's changed, we're still doing the same thing.
Yeah, it just means if there was a complaint found it, we either fixed it, or we're working on fixing it, or the state's not gonna give us their money, is what they said, and we're getting the money, so.
That's what I said, I saw the complaint, I we're we're still leaning on compliance on what I was even talking about, because we, it's not till next year. But I just wanted to see how the compliance worked, as far as, do we send in a whole report, or is it just this page saying, you know, that was what I wanted to know, so, appreciate it.
Any other discussion? Alright, all those in favor of approval of the LEA compliance report, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next will be the approval of the twenty-four, twenty-five TESA accountability template report, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Pousso, now discussion.
If it, if it's okay, Dr. Duncan's going to uh, speak to this, give you some highlights, uh, we're very proud of what we did last year as far as uh, the TESA compliance. Just just a little perspective on what this is about, and it's going to become more and more detailed, the state with the new funding formula, they want to see if if they're getting their bang for the buck, just to put it real simple. And and by meeting our goals and and things like that with certain groups, we are able to, we get more funding. So, we're proud of what we did, we're gonna have, I don't know the exact numbers, and we'll have those at the next meeting, on uh, some of the financial benefits of being in this. Dr. Duncan has worked very, very hard on this, and had a lot of input from our uh, principals, our our uh, academic coaches, I've had some talk, you know, we, when we looked at it, I I I had some input on where to put our numbers. So, I I'll let him talk to you about what's what's in here, I know you all have it in your packet, and it's a lot to read. And we have to have this approved in order to get our money. And we, we've already sent it in, but it has to show that the board has seen it and approved what we're doing. Dr. Duncan?
Yeah, like Mr. Craig said, this is the second year of the report, it's very similar to last year's report, and uh, you know, where we have to have this approved by November first, every year is the board, you know, working in the schools every day with our coaches and principals, this is a twelve month out of the year kind of deal, this is front and center, our goals. Um, really, you're only required to have one goal, and that's a seventy percent of third grade achievement by twenty thirty. Um, but we, we have four goals, we have that seventy percent by twenty thirty, we uh, did increase to fifty-one and a half percent. And we've uh, kept on pace to go towards that achievement level by twenty thirty, one thing that was also in that goal that we have already hit, and we are done with, is that the TESA does require that in third grade ELA proficiency, that you uh, close the gap by fifteen percent within three years, starting in spring of twenty-three, we exceeded that by a lot in spring of twenty-four. So, that checked that portion of the goal off forever, even if you were to, I don't think we're gonna drop down, but even if we were to drop down, that's already taken care of, uh, TDOE said. Uh, one change between the twenty-three report and the twenty-four report, last year, we kinda went by each grade level, three, four, five, all the way up to every assessment um, grade. This year, we kinda consolidated into grade bands, three, five, six, eight, nine, twelve, we just kinda felt it was a little easier to do that as far as pinpointing uh, each grade level, just some highlights on our ELA grade, we hit our TESA goal in five out of eight um, grades. And then on the math side of things, on uh, there are nine areas that are assessed in mathematics, and we hit our TESA goal in eight out of nine of those, so uh, we're pretty on track, and really, the goal on the ELA and the math side of things would be to hit fifty percent achievement by twenty twenty-eight, that's what we're shooting for there. And then the additional goal would be our ready graduate, um, it was the only one that we really didn't hit, it's a little unusual in the sense that you're talking about a cohort that lags behind, last year was the first year of the TESA report, we saw where we were at. We made changes last year, but those changes won't be reflected until this year's cohort, so any changes made last year was not reflected in the ready graduate data that was available now, because that would have been the graduating class of like twenty-two, so graduation, uh, ready graduate, college career rating, this always lags behind a year. So, uh, it was put out for public review in October, October first through like the eleventh, then we got a little bit of feedback, so as Mr. Craig said, it's already submitted to the state, department is just waiting for board approval and uh, record the minutes, so, any other questions, I can answer them.
Any discussion?
Can I say something?
Sure.
There was, there's been questions, I guess, about why we would change the the numbers and make it lower. You look at the data of the children that you are, that are in that, in that cohort, they're not all the same. And so, if you've got benchmark data or or TCAT data that says that they're projected to be, you know, I'm just gonna throw a number out, forty percent proficient. And and so, you don't want to set a goal that they're gonna be seventy percent proficient in that year. So, you 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 have to really look at it, because every kid's different, and every cohort is different. We're seeing right now, the children that were pre-K and K during COVID, you can imagine where they are compared to other children in our school system. And I think that's also, it doesn't even take into account all the explosive behaviors that we're dealing with now in school. Uh, and and if, I'd like for some of you someday to come with me, and I'll show you what I'm talking about, uh, what it, what the teachers are dealing with every day. And I not only do I know because I'm in the buildings every day, I know because I've got one that comes home to me and talks to me about it every day. So, I really think that we are 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 on the right track, the right trajectory, trajectory. Uh, I I think that you'll see in our letter grades, we've got some preliminary data, and we can plug into a calculator. We're gonna see, maybe not always moving up a letter grade, but improvement within those, within that scale, and I think, Dr. Duncan, we talked about this a lot today, actually, so just a little something for y'all to to know that that our teachers, and our administrators, and and everybody involved in the school system are are really doing a bang-up job, I believe, and uh, that's why we're able to meet these goals, because they take pride in it, and I'm proud of what they do every day.
Yeah, our third grade goal for spring of twenty-five is fifty-four and a half percent, that doesn't mean we're settling for fifty-four and a half percent, they're working every day to get a hundred percent achievement, it's just, that's where it goes, so.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the approval of the TESA template report, signify by saying aye? Any opposed, say no? So, next, we have the approval of the BOLO grant contract, uh, I know we've discussed this before, this has been brought back, because anytime school enters any kind of agreement with a contract, or expenditures outside of the, what has already been budgeted for, approved by the board, has to be approved by the board. And that's all this is, just a little cleanup, needs to be approved, so that they can go forward with it, this is the uh, the the dog being out at North Stewart to help with them, this is just something we've gotta do, so they can continue, they're ready to go, they're just waiting on approval, so the contract can be signed and some things like that. One thing that had happened uh, was the insurance had recommended, that instead of taking this donation of the dog to use it, we actually pay the dog owner a stipend. So that, in future, the dog owner can't say, hey, the school never paid us, we sue them for back wages. Uh, they said that's happened, some lawsuits have happened like that, and the insurance wanted us to have a small stipend um, to cover that, and that's that's over here, so um, do we have an approval for this uh, BOLO grant contract? What's that, a motion, I'm sorry, a motion for the approval?
Motion.
Mr. Lamb, second?
Second.
Second, by Mr. Shelton, alright, any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye? Any opposed, say no? Alright, next is the discussion and the approval option on the North Stewart Elementary Roof Project, and uh, Mr. Craig's gonna go into detail with this, um, so, before we can have discussion, we can go ahead and and have a motion uh, to discuss and and possibly approve, there are motions for that?
Motion.
Motion, Kyle, Mr. Pousso, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Shelton, alright, Mike, if you will, discuss this with us, please.
We've already put in the budget, when we done our budget, to replace the roof at at North Stewart, and I forget the exact amount, but we have the money there. We have had I guess, four, four contractors come in and do inspections, do different things. We have two options, basically. Uh, one option is to go back and put what we had on there, a rubber roof, that's basically what it, what it would be. And every contractor that we've talked to, they will guarantee a rubber roof for twenty years. Okay? The other option is, you could go with the, uh, what's called a Duralast, uh, I know y'all are familiar, you, I think we were involved with some discussions and presentations from uh, Coriel Roofing. Uh, they have a product that they put on roofs, it's a uh, harder type of thing, and it's seamless, one, that's the difference between the two. I actually had a call from Coriel yesterday, uh, roofing company, that because they have already done a a job and have a bid approved in Manchester, Tennessee, that the state allows a piggyback where we would not have to bid the job, and I hate to use that term, we could piggyback off the bid that Manchester City Schools is using. Uh, they quoted a price, they did, of uh, seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. The rubber roof, in in full disclosure, and even the Coriel guys told me, if uh, if you, if you're going economical, that's where you want to go, is a a different direction. So, I don't, I don't have a for sure quote on a rubber roof, uh, but one option we could do, we could go ahead and, and we've already got the bid drawn up, we've already got the bid package where what we would like to do with that type of roof is put that out, see what comes back, and then we can make a, you know, we could either go with the lowest bid, or if you wanna uh, if you wanted to go and piggyback off of uh, the Manchester. One thing to keep in mind, and I'm not trying to steer this anyway, is that I think the building at North Stewart was built in nineteen seventy-four. Okay? So, it's, you know, I was in first grade when they moved into it, and I'm fifty-eight years old, so you figure that's fifty-two years ago, I guess, is when I moved into that building. And uh, hopefully, uh, I won't be here probably, uh, in twenty years, uh, you would think we would probably have a new school out there. Somebody's gonna, I mean, at some point, that's gonna have to happen, so, what I guess I'm bringing to y'all is, which direction do you want us to go? Do we want to put the bid out, see what, see the lowest price we can get on it, uh, or pursue other options?
Mike, you said rubber twenty years?
Mm-mm.
What about the seamless, did it have a?
The twenty year.
It's both twenty, and the seamless people say rubber will be cheaper? Is what you're saying, economically?
It's gonna be cheap, I mean, I mean, Jamie can probably tell you more, he's talked to these roofing guys till he's blown in the face, I'll just tell you, he's been, I mean, we've had, we've this is something that's been in the front of our mind, and if I could put that roof on tomorrow, I would do it, but you know, part of, and this is one thing that we found out. Parts of North Stewart's roof will not have to be torn off, they'll be able to go right over the top of it. The oldest parts will have to have a complete tear off and a put, and and put a new roof on. So, you know, i- i- it's what you want, what you want to do, I mean, it's a, uh, I know the product, and and I've talked to a superintendent who have done the Duralast with Coriel, and they love it. They're also in schools that are, uh, they decided that's what they wanted to do, we even had a guy come out last week and look at putting in a sloped roof over the top of the existing roof, but that got into a lot of stuff, we'd have to hire state law said we'd have to hire an architect, an engineer, and uh, they quoted a pri- a ballpark of one point, I think it was one point six million. Whereas, the Coriel, they're saying they could do it for seven hundred and something, and so I'm thinking the, you know, those prices have come down, since we've talked about this before. Uh, I'm thinking that, you know, you probably, so.
So, which ones could we get done faster? The Duralast? Because we'd be piggybacking off of.
No, I mean, no, no, because we can't do anything until school's out.
Slope, slope is the only one we do quick.
I can't, I cannot, I can't go have them go out there tearing a roof off while there's kids, so, and part of what we're gonna put in the, in the bid package is uh, that it would be done of what So, and part of what we're gonna put in the, in the bid package is, uh, that it would be done at, at least one week before school began, or there'd be a penalty. And we'll have to get with Charles and others and, and write a contract once we get the bid approved. And in the bid that we, if we go with the specs I'm talking about on the rubber roof, we've done last night, we just had a few drips. Now, when it's coming to rain, our guys are good, they go out there as, as much as they're doing everything they can with how, I don't know how much work we've tried to put on it. And here's what's happening, and how old that roof is. When you walk on it, it cracks. And every time we get up there and start looking at it, roofer tells us, you're, you're probably causing more damage. So what we've done, we've gone in with, with rubber that we have, and we'll, we'll seal it where we think where the leaks coming in, and it goes to another spot. So they're chasing them, and we're, I mean, like I said, last night, we just had a couple of rooms that, that dripped. And I know, believe me, firsthand, we've, it's an issue. And, uh, so we're, we're doing the best we can with what we have, without going in and just replacing the roof. And that's what we plan to do in the summer.
Thank you.
Mike, this company's right here is giving you a price for a thing like this?
They're giving it a ballpark.
A ballpark.
Yeah, they won't, you know, we got it.
They're willing to lock a price in seven months from now?
Yeah.
Wow.
The roof at North Stewart with Coriel, he quoted me what the bid is in Manchester, it's fifteen dollars and fifty cents per square foot. And, uh, the rubber roof guys, it'll be cheaper than that, so.
So we're, we're, we're comparing seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand, whatever it is compared?
Probably about seven hundred.
Seven hundred thousand compared to rubber roof is roughly five?
No, no. Seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand for the harder roof, the, the Duralast. About ten to fifteen percent cheaper for the rubber roof. So you're looking at about, you'd save probably seventy-five, eighty thousand dollars.
And when he says harder, what he, if you're going from a rubber roof to like a more of a plastic PVC type material? That's the difference in the Duralast and then the EPDM. EPDM's more rubber, like most roofs are, and then you've got a PVC covering other than rubber, it's just harder.
Are they doing third-party inspections? Any of these? Any of this, is funding gonna have any kind of inspections for our business?
I would have to get into the details. Now, the, the bid would call for weekly safety inspections and weekly updates.
Is that something you can do, Jamie?
Any other discussion?
Is it any structural damage from the leaks that we got now?
Not looking from the bottom, which, you know, you can see up to the roof pan. Um, and the, the sections that are just gonna be layover is the newer sections that were just built. Um, obviously, the, the section that's been there the longest has three different roofs on it. So we haven't seen from the roof pan to the rubber roof now. You know, which that's being torn out, so even if it is it, but, um, North Stewart, being as old as it is, is probably one of the better structural buildings that we have. Um, that's, you know, I mean, we haven't seen any damage or any type of anything like that, so no.
Anybody else? Any other discussion? So I guess what we're gonna talk about now, because it is put with, uh, two options there to do. Do we have anybody leaning one way to the other, or do we want? Do we wanna get?
Can I say something?
Absolutely.
You could put a bid out, doesn't mean you have to go with that bid. You know, if we put a bid out and they come back and they say it's nine hundred thousand dollars for a rubber roof, and then we would be, we would be, I won't say dumb, but we wouldn't be very smart if we didn't go back and say, well, we've already know we can do it for this price. That's just my, my opinion, is that you put a bid out.
I think that honestly, getting the, the official bid would be the best way to go, because the, the rubber comes back not as much less, not as much, you know, not cheaper than what you're thinking in the PVC, then, I mean, it might be the way to go. I mean, if it's the same price, then.
Do we have a time limit on piggybacking on that other contract? It's locked in from now.
They're gonna call me back Monday after this meeting.
Is it a bid company? I mean, they gotta be able to go schools in the summer?
We've got one to do.
I mean, I'm sitting there, if they're getting ready to do one in Manchester.
They've got crews all over the country, they're, they're, they're big outfit.
And they're, they've just moved into Tennessee the last couple of years, and they've gotten big quick.
Do we have planning? Do they provide planning?
They provide planning. All we have to do is put the spec out, the bid package out, and all these companies said they've got the, most of them's already, the ones I think will bid on it, they've already been on that roof a bunch. In fact, one of them's coming to back to see if they can help us patch it up, to get through it till we actually replace it.
Are we doing RFQs or just a bid? Request for bid?
Bid.
Just a bid. Just that size project, it's gonna, get halfway through it, then we have to come back and come in. Engineering or architectural stuff, so.
I'd like to see the option of the bids myself, and see what we've got to work with. That's how I feel, because we're not gonna be able to do it till school's out anyway. So I feel like that we should look.
We get the bids back, say, I put, say we get the bids out next week. Say, you know, I think we've pretty much got it ready to go, we just need to redo it and some more. I mean, we've had roofers help us come up with the specs of what, and I've talked to other directors of schools and their, uh, maintenance people, and how they've done. I've never put a roof on a building, so I, you know, I, I was going out and just trying to gather information. I've seen everything from five-hundred-page documents, uh, to a one-page, we just want a roof put on. And, uh, so ours is a little more detailed than that, we have a pretty, we have a good handle on what we gotta do to fix it, because we've been dealing with it. And, uh, we finally are financially able to do it without asking the county for more money.
Mike? I'm sorry. Go ahead, I was asking for any more.
Mike, the rubber roof is twenty years, what is the other one?
Twenty.
Is twenty miles old?
All of them, I, every, every roof company that we've talked to, it said twenty years.
Twenty years.
Even, even that other company.
And that means that if they, they put a, so the dip, the big difference in these two roofs is, one's seamless and one has seams in it. And when you have seams in a roof, y'all know, at some point, it's gonna leak, if you have a flat roof. Uh, so, uh, I can't believe I know this much about roofs now, because I never, that and air conditioners until I got in this job. It's, uh, that's basically a, a general thing. If they give you a twenty-year warranty, a seamless, they set a roof with seams on it, if it leaks, they're gonna come out and fix it.
That's where, again, I think that if, if the price is close, I mean, I mean, realistically, you know, the seamless would be the better way to go, because you probably have a lot less problems. You don't want, even though they give you the warranty, you don't want them to come back. That's where I think that, I think we need to see the price officially.
Why you have bids?
Any other discussion? Do we have a, gathering from what you hear, do we wanna make a motion to amend the motion to receive bids on both projects? Do we have a, a motion for that? Do we wanna make that motion? Motion by Mr. Lamb to amend it. Both companies. Oh, yeah, seamless and rubber. Uh, do we have a second? Adam. Uh, second by Mr. Gill. We amended, amended the motion to approve the roof project to receive bids on both products. We got a second. All in favor, say, say aye? Any opposed, say no? Uh, next is the insulin class action lawsuit discussion and vote. Uh, Charles is gonna just touch briefly on this, on what's been brought to us as, uh, as the school system's been brought to our attention by, by some legal, legal folks.
Yeah, I think you got it in your packet of PowerPoint. Essentially a class action. Chris McCarty out of Knoxville, uh, represents a lot of school boards. He's on a group that we all talk, um, essentially, if you follow any kind of Senate insulin stuff, they've caught, pharmaceuticals gouging the insulin market, so. They're taking a class action to any self-funded plant, which we are a self-funded health insurance plant, even though we have Blue Cross, we're still self-funded by the state. And they're gonna class action sue them for more or less a windfall on the pricing. So anybody that we have or are in our system that receive insulin could be a possibility. Now, I don't wanna give it a number, but they talk like fifty thousand per, per individual. So if we had ten people in our system, we could be looking at five thousand dollars, possibly. It's part of the system. Uh, then the system can choose what they want to do. Of course, it's a class action, it, you know, may get settled out of court, I'm not sure. It's very similar to the social media, the, the vaping stuff, it's the same guys doing it. I trust Chris McCarty, um, he's behind it a hundred percent, Chuck Cagle's behind it, so I feel like it's something y'all should do. I don't know how many in our system has that issue, but, uh, insulin has affected a lot, you know, diabetes affects a lot of people, so. That's essentially the, if you want me to get William on the phone, the lead attorney on it, I can, but I think the PowerPoint explains it pretty good, so.
Any Chuck Cagle behind those two, should say?
Yeah, I mean, he, he's not come out as much as Chris has, but they work at the same law firm, so. And they both represent school boards, so.
Thank you, Charles. We have a motion, uh, to approve on the insulin class action lawsuit. You what?
I said you need one.
That's what I said, do we have a motion? Anyone wanna make a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, do we have a second? Second, on the send, do we have any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye? Any opposed, say no? carries. Uh, do we have any new business or announcements, uh, by the members? Anything y'all wanna bring up, talk about?
Just wanna echo, I know we were, I was kind of a little out of line, but, um, I, I wanna thank Ms. Peters for bringing that to our attention also. And I'm in favor of all equal, children being all equal. Uh, some do better at some things than others, and I really want us to take a look at that as well.
Agreed.
Yes.
Agreed. Anyone else? All onto the director's report.
All right, uh, I'll, I'll address what we're doing in the short term at the annex, uh, and, and with the roof over there. Not only do we have an issue with the leaking, uh, in the old library where they keep their props and things, and I apologize that it's come to that. It's, it's, I don't have, we don't have any excuses for it, it's just an old building. But also down on the other part of the annex where we have ALC now, one side of it is, is in, in bad disrepair. Uh, what we're gonna do on the short term, uh, is, it'll probably be Monday, correct? Don Kennedy Roofing is coming out to see if they can help us do some work on it to temporarily, uh, stop the leaking. To be honest with you, the auditorium is not leaking, I, I don't think anymore. Is it, Jamie, or we have?
Very little.
Huh?
Very little.
Very little, and we're going, and that's not acceptable either, but we're going to, uh, so I would think that we need to, uh, as, as a board, not we, I'm not on the board, but is to, to, uh, maybe when we come back in our next meeting, consider while we're doing the roof at North Stewart, seeing if we can get the roof, roofs done at the, at the annex, because we're gonna use that building. I mean, uh, we, uh, we don't have anywhere else to put a lot of things. Uh, there's nothing wrong with the structure of the, of the building, it just needs roofwork, it needs, it needs a new roof. And so, uh, I talked to a director last, over the weekend, when we were at the TSBA, uh, in Waukegan County. He's got eight roofs to do over the next five years. Uh, it is a chronic problem for everybody, because, uh, really, it's some, it's one of the last things people think of. And, uh, until, you don't think of it until it leaks. Uh, and, uh, and I think going forward, we've got a plan in place to, to, uh, keep, uh, keep on top of it. I know from our inspections of all the roofs, that in probably two to three years, Dover Elementary's gonna need a roof. Uh, but that roof will be a lot simpler to do, it'll be a straight layover, because it's only got one thing. And then people are thinking, well, why we haven't replaced roofs? Well, Dover Elementary was be, built in nineteen ninety-seven. And so we're going on, you know, however many years that is. I always get mixed up, because I wanna think that.
What's the age of the building that we're there with?
Well, we all went to elementary school there, didn't we?
I said we all, who's we all?
All the old timers.
And, and Mike, I'd like to say also, and I know that we talked about, you said the next twenty years with North Stewart. Uh, Darrell could probably echo what I'm saying. I was on the school board when this high school was built, we have a different commission now than we did then. But right there at the end, where you come out the lobby to go into the gym, that was the area for a theater. And the commissioners had, had us to take it out because of the money. So there is the spot for a drop, for the drama class. That would really be good if we could look into that as the future. And I may not be around, but I sure hope that it could be attached to the school and make it as close as with the golf and the baseball. And everything that I'm in favor of, of as well, because they have to travel all the way to Dover Elementary as well. And that school, that, you know, and I know that that may look a little far and a little expensive to everybody, but if we don't have that goal of getting that theater here, Houston County built their school right after us, they've got a wonderful, uh, theater there, because it was not taken out of their, their plan. And, and Darrell, you remember, they, we had to remove something, and we had to remove the theater because of the money. So that is something, that area was designated there, so it would be a really good thing for us to look to in the, in the future. And, and not just keep putting a roof on a building that was built in the fifties and sixties.
Ms. Peters, are you talking about the area if you?
Gravel park.
Gravel park. To the right.
Yes, yes, because see, it was gonna be a two-story, just like the high school. It was gonna go up and not go out. So am I not correct, Darrell? Is that not right? It was gonna be like, they were gonna have like seats, like a theater seat that's set up, like, like our gymnasium, that went up and then had the stage. And those plans should be somewhere, I don't have them anymore.
You know, there was a move back in the early two thousands, Fairview High School did it. They called them, uh, uh, gematoriums. And what it was, is the, the bleachers would go all the way, the seats would fold all the way back against the wall, so you could actually, you had an auxiliary gym.
Right.
So if, if the drama wasn't using it for play.
It was, but it was a, it was a, it was a different story as well, because it was more of a theater that come down this week for us.
Drama area. So what you were doing, what you did is, when drama wasn't using it, uh, instead of kids having to stay to eight o'clock at night to practice basketball, you could have two basketball practices going, or volleyball prac, or whatever. Because, you know, we've been adding sports, and it's a challenge for us right now to, to schedule.
Gym time.
Gym time for everybody.
And I, and I think.
And, and, and the, uh, the drama part, because I remember when that happened, I was in Waverly. I just remember my father, uh, he was, he couldn't believe that they cut that out, he was, he was irate.
And, and the thing about it is, drama should have precedent over it.
Oh, yeah.
They should have the first chance, because that would be theirs, just like the football locker room and all of that. But that area right there was designated for, for a, because it was, it was voted down. I mean, we had to remove it.
I'm not against it at all.
And I think it's something that.
I think it's something we need to look together as a board.
I do, because, you know, we had a vision for a baseball field, and we got it, we're doing the bathrooms, we got it. We're doing the golf, and we're working on that, and I think it's a goal that we need to work on for that, because the area's right there. We don't even have to find a space.
The productions are amazing, I, I, I love going, and she was right, they're sold out.
And I usually don't get to go, because I wait too late, I don't have, I can't get in, you know, I'm always late, y'all know that, don't, don't echo that. But, I mean, seriously, you know, that's something that I think that we should, should, should set a goal to look into. Because if we don't, we're just gonna keep patching. And, and she even said that they had outgrown it, just like everything else is being outgrown. So we need something that's larger for them, you know, because it, it takes a wa, I know from all of us, it takes a lot to, to sit in front of these people and speak. Can you only imagine getting up there and, and memorizing lines and doing a, a play in front of everybody? You know, that, that takes a lot of courage, and it takes a lot of intelligence to do it as well. So, you know, I think that's something that we need to, we need to look for, look to, myself.
I'm not sure, but is those, is that auxiliary still on the plant? Was, are they, was they drawing it?
I don't think they were, I think it was mentioned that, but we couldn't even do the theater. It was mentioned to have the op, now, you know, I've slept quite a bit since then. It was mentioned to have the op- now, you know, I slept quite a bit since then. But I remember basically it was the theater. It was the theater and then we were gonna try to use it for some other things. But it was actually the commissioners, we had to, we had to take it out. We had to take something out and it had to be that because there was nothing else to remove. So that's.
And I, I, I know she's still sitting back there, so I hope she will do some research and help us out with that.
Yes, I hope so.
And do that.
Because I've always thought that's where it needed to be. I think I've even mentioned to the board and, and other parents before, that's a wasted space right there because that was added in to what we were supposed to do to complete the high school.
I like it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm still in the director's report.
Yeah.
Still got some more. I promise I'll be brief from here on.
I'll start.
Uh, I was asked about the bathroom progress. Uh, we're, we're trying to figure out, we have a plan to build those bathrooms. Now at this, you know, once I found out about wanting to build this golf facility, kinda probably in the same area we're looking at building the, uh, bathrooms, we probably need to have a discussion of whether or not we could just build one building and take part of it and use it for the ba- restrooms. So you've got, you've already appropriated a hundred thousand dollars for the bathrooms. Now you've appropriated a hundred thousand dollars to go towards that. I, I would be interested in having maybe sitting down with the, the people that wanna do this and seeing if we could just make that a part of that project. Cause the big expense I see is coming out of the bathrooms is we're gonna have to figure out what to do with the.
Accept it.
Yeah. Because if we hook into our current set, our, our current, we're gonna have to buy and pay for a grinder pump.
So the state didn't approve or accept it?
No, we have, no, we haven't heard back from them.
Haven't heard back.
But from what we're gathering from the first person we talked to, you could just, you could pretty much put a, a tank in. No, no, they're, the, the first guy we talked to felt like we could put a tank in, even if we wanna put a tank in and just pump it out whenever it needed to be pumped out. Or, because I don't, again, I'm not a engineer and I'm not, I'm learning a lot about septic tanks now. I don't think that we have, I don't think we have enough room to put in field lights. Because we don't have any space from, you have no space, you go to the creek and that's it.
Yeah, but I think you'll talk to, Jamie probably knows that they'll allow you, if you don't have room for septics, for a field pit full of gravel. As long, but you have to pump it.
Yes.
Grinder pump. Have a grinder pump.
If you cooked into a sewer, but if you could possibly put in septic and it would just have, and no more than that bath, those bathrooms would be used.
It wouldn't ever fill up.
You would probably just have to pump it out once a year from what we can gather.
Jamie? Yeah, that's contingent on no cooking in the concession stand.
There wouldn't be.
You know, you can't have any grease or food. You know, because the way I was told from the first guy, it's no different than having porta potties pumped out. That way you're, there's no food, nothing going in those and they can be pumped out at the end of the season. You have a, just a bigger holding tank that we can have pumped out.
But nobody, we, we don't have no cooking.
Right. Be hot dog, you know, something like that.
We're not gonna have a big fryer in there, right, and grease going down.
Space out there, if you've got golf people out there, they're gonna need to use the bathroom too. So, I mean, use muzzle, get the septic tank and be done with it because you're gonna have people out there.
You said you didn't, if I'm correct, you said that for the golf, you didn't, there wouldn't be any plumbing. So, you know, why would you not want to do it all together and have the plumbing for everybody? Because those golf kids are not gonna be in there without having to run somewhere to the bathroom.
Well, they, they were, they were saying that because they knew a bathroom's being built right there anyways.
But that's what I'm saying, if you can, if you can, can do it for all, why would that not be something that we could do?
I don't, I haven't had any in-depth discussions with the group that's wanting to do this. No details, as they say, the devil's in the details. But I think if we si- if, if we all sit down, I think they could, from what I'm gathering, they would not have a problem with all that being attached.
It may be better too, because there was a law passed in twenty twenty-three that if you build on school grounds, you have to have certain things in building.
I would think you have to have a support fund to have. I would think that it would have to be. I thought you could just stick up a building with no bathroom.
The, uh, the last thing I have, and this is some, I, I'm very proud of our school system, our kids, and I say that all the time. But, uh, recently, I guess it was before, I, I don't know the exact day we did it, but a few weeks ago, we had a system-wide hat day and, uh, to raise money for the, uh, uh, hurricane victims in East Tennessee. And our, our school system, our kids and teachers raised one thousand three hundred and thirty-eight dollars. That money was sent to the East Tennessee Foundation and that money's going directly to school systems that were affected by it. And, you know, we sat with, uh, at TSBA, we sat with a group from Unicoid County. I mean, they went weeks, no, you know, I don't know how, if y'all know how hard there was, they had lost one school. Uh, so you figure, you think about what happened in Waverly a few years ago and then across East Tennessee. And so we were able to, and, and that was one of the, you know, people came to me and said, we wanna raise some money to help them, but we wanna make sure it goes to the right place. So I did a little research and, uh, we found that every penny that we raised will go directly to the school systems that were affected. So we were able to help out our friends in East Tennessee and I'm, I'm really proud of that. And that's all I've got.
Good job. Great job. Thank you. Do we have Ms. Sanders' favor?
Probably a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Ms. Sanders. Do we have a second? Mr. Gillen, that's you. You want to bring it in? All right, all in favor, say aye.